Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. This means call back to order at 8:50. We're now going to go to agenda items. Discussing number three, discussion and consideration of action items. A, consider and take possible action regarding rescinding the name of the Dr. Willis R. Mackey High School.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Mancius. Second, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Mancius, this is your item.
Thank you. I do want to say that your comments were well appreciated, both pro and con. I always appreciate engagement from our community, and that's truly what it's all about. So, I do want to say thank you to that. And also, Mr. Salyer, I really appreciate you putting the item on the agenda. That was a very important aspect to take care of. Regarding the rescinding of the name, I want to be clear to the community that our board policies do allow for this type of action to take place. And we're human beings. We make mistakes, and so naturally, we have an opportunity to make things right. I will tell you that someone had mentioned, "How often do we revote?" A lot. And I will tell you, there are two issues that weren't too far down the pipeline that we changed our vote. In fact, my colleague, Mr. LaFoil, was one of them that changed his vote regarding allocation of funding to build a sidewalk that I disagreed with, and it was killed, along with three other colleagues, but a month later, it was put back on the agenda, and we revoked it, and it passed. So, we allocated $300,000 or something to that effect to Bear County to build sidewalks near Metzger Middle School. And then, of course, the personal issue for me is I've been trying to implement internal audits into this district. We need a third-party independent counsel to review our books. That passed, and Mr. LaFoil actually voted for it. Later on, he voted to, actually put on the agenda to defund the department. So, there is no active real internal audit function that we can have that's from the administration. So, we change our mind all the time, and don't let anybody feel, fool you to say that we're losing credibility. I mean, I think if I were to be held accountable and be evaluated, I would be much appreciated if I was evaluated for someone who is responsive to their community, because I think above all, a representative reflects their community's values. And if it means changing your mind, then that's okay. I mean, I'm not here because I want to rule things my way. I'm here to represent the community. And after hearing the community, it was apparent that this issue was divisive. The honoring of a name is supposed to be an honor, and the moment it became divisive, it became a distraction. There's been countless hours and countless things that have happened regarding this issue that could have been spent doing other things that are important for our district. And so, we really have to take a step back. Do we really want to continue moving forward with a divisive name? I heard someone also mention, "Well, still," you know, they didn't want still, or they didn't want... You know what? They weren't smart enough to change it. The thing is, we have the intelligence here to make things right, and we don't have to be still. We can be Judson and say, "We are responsive to this community." And so, in that vein, is why I asked to put this back on the agenda. I voted for it, and I've made no secret about it. In September, I decided to support it. It was afterwards that, as an elected official, I realized I made a mistake. And so, our board operating procedures do call for this step and procedure, which is great. I also mentioned that the weakness is in our protocol to name schools, and there's been countless people talking about the process. Our process is deeply flawed. You don't see this happening in other districts across the state, even Bear County. And so, we have now a responsibility to revisit our naming protocol. I will say, I was optimistic when Mr. Flores had actually said the same thing. We need to go back and revisit our naming policy. So, let's do that. Let's take a step back. Let's not name an institution that is already dividing the community and go forward in a manner that unites the community. The other aspect of this issue is that it has highlighted division on the board. We have had a very contentious time since 2010. Some on this board would blame me for that division, but I always try to stand up for what is right, and so, I have no regrets for whatever I've done. But the bottom line, if this is causing division on this board, and if it's causing issues with our community and creating a disconnect, why are we doing it? I mean, what is the motive here? There are so many more people that we can name this institution for, and/or we can go Evans High School for crying out loud, and it would be less divisive, and it would quickly unify our community. I will say, if we fail to not rescind this name, that we will have outlash from the community in terms of supporting the bond. Anytime the community at large has no trust in their leadership, we can't pass anything. And so, I believe in my heart that we will have, we will hear from the community through the bond, and then through the election process in May of 2017. And I will even say that our community is smart. They may actually vote for every proposition on the bond but Mackey High School, if that's what the name ends up staying. So, it's our job as leaders of this great district to unite our community, get this off the table, take away the division. I have even heard, and I'm pretty darn sure that Dr. Mackey himself has called people to come out and support this issue. So, I mean, it's a vanity thing, I believe, for him. It's his ego. And so, we have no place for that. It means that, obviously, that we need to change it. And so, I'm hopeful that my colleagues can understand that by changing their name, I mean rescinding the vote, it's not a bad thing. I will admit, I made a mistake in September. And so, I always like to, and I'm going to put on public record now, that when I got home, my wife let me sleep on the sofa the first two nights. She was pissed, but I always tell her that I have to make decisions, and at the time, I thought that was okay. And I also wanted to go back and say that there are some real key issues. I call it the Wayne Harper notebook, but the whole issue about JECCA that someone mentioned earlier, we paid Dr. Mackey to implement the program long beyond the vision for JECCA was implemented. That was his job. He didn't do anything special. It was like, the vision is there, let's put JECCA in, this is what we'd like to see. We hired him as superintendent, and he executed his job. That's not a big deal, and that's really what we paid him money for. So, and secondly, there's been a lot of, and I'll refer to Mr. Harper's document, that we were a recognized district under his leadership. And to be honest, we really weren't. We were in name only. It was a year that Governor Perry wanted to look really good to Texas voters, and he implemented, I believe, a total projection measure, which means he allowed districts to accept projections of where we would be, and if we were at that area, we were recognized, we could be recognized as a district. That's fuzzy math, and I'm glad they got rid of that stuff, because that's not real. The thing is, now, he takes credit for it, and obviously, he shouldn't have. There were some districts in Bear County that did not use the total projection measure, and of course, it was our right as a district to choose to select it or not. But you have to look at things when you peel them back. Are they real? So, that was an issue. Also had someone mentioned about speaking from the heart, not speaking from the heart, but speaking from the mind. You can do a little bit of both. We're a passionate group of people here. I have no apologies for being passionate, and if we're not passionate, then we don't care. So, you're going to have some heart, but you're also going to have some mind, and that's why I mentioned that thoughts of him starting JECCA are the recognized part. The other part that I wanted to say is that there were things within his time that he didn't support. He never supported internal audits. I don't think he wanted anybody looking at, over what he was doing. He didn't support fraud and abuse hotlines, which was something that our district needed. Now, we have an anonymous fraud and abuse hotline that he didn't support as well. There was a lack of vision. We're a growing district, and we need controls. So, and the other part, too, that is really, I'm not attacking him personally, I'm just stating the obvious. We've had five years of decline in our SAT scores, which is one of the things that I've asked him to do. We need stronger SAT scores in this district, and we hadn't realized it. So, the other part, too, I gotta, I can't omit this. We passed the bond. He takes credit for that as well. But it was a no-tax increase bond. Not 9.9% of all non-tax increase bonds will pass. The work that needs to be done is when you try to pass a bond that has a tax increase, because you know what that means? You have to work with the community. You have to build those relationships. And suffice it to say, he was either unwilling to do that or unable to do that. And so, that's why a no-tax bond was put on the table. That was incomplete. I said it when we were talking about it the first time. Why do you want to build a high school that's not built out? And so, now, we're going back to the community, asking to build it out. And so, it's just a way of being sloppy. So, and again, I didn't, I can actually, I took some criticism for voting against it, and I will say, because I did that, because I saw that we were not doing it the right way, and this is in relation to the bond. And then, I think I've hit my points. Hold on. Well, I did. I think the main points I hit were there. But it's back on the agenda, as it were, it should be. And tonight, I don't know how the vote will go. I really don't. I mean, it's not like I consorted with anybody on the majority of this board to determine how we were going to move forward with this, but I can tell you that, just looking at it in black and white, if this issue is divisive, we need to find another way to move forward with another name. And so, this is our opportunity to be responsive to our community. And keep in mind, I put this on the agenda for one other reason. I want my colleagues accountable. I want them to know that their actions will speak loudly on how they hear their community. And in every facet, this is definitely a majority of our community that does not want this name. No doubt about it. So, people want to go fishing, they want to retire, well, they're going to get their chance in May 2017. So, that's all I have to say about it for now, but certainly want to put it out there and hear from my colleagues as to why this name is so important that we need to keep.
Mr. Salinas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, during the October meeting, I was out of state, and I could not be here. The first thing that I did when I came back was to look at my board packet. That's where I noticed that during that meeting, and I did look at the tape, sir, during that meeting, you were handed a petition of over 2,000 constituents, whether they're yours, mine's, at large, or whatever, but it was handed to you. During my six years as a board member, if I received 10 emails, it's too many. I never got complaints from my constituents. I communicated with my constituents when I would see them, or they would recognize me. I would get a phone call once in a while. Never. Just in less than two months, here's the proof. What they want. They're all here, and they all, the board members, all of them have them. And two of these board members are responsible for all these constituents, because they represent at large. I believe, and I was advised by board members when I became president, that it was very important that we listen to the community. We send a message to the community that we do listen, and that we do care about what they say. I don't know what has happened. Obviously, with all this information that we have with us, they've sent a very large and clear message. Our community has spoken to all of us, not just me, or Mr. Salyer, or Mr... All of us. I think it's time to listen to the people that put us be right here, to serve as their representatives, not our own representatives. Their representatives. That's why we have seven, we have five districts, and then we have two at large. I hope that my fellow board members have looked at all these emails. By the way, I've answered all of them. And even though you're not my constituent, but I think it's important, we don't only represent our district, because we're all here for one thing. That's our students. And anything that affects our students, I am going to make sure and listen. We're not listening, so we need to do something tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. LaFoil.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. The thing is, folks, I got to answer two people that got up here and spoke about me. One of them said, last board meeting, "I was considering changing my vote, because I had talked to a 12-year-old girl, and she kind of changed my mind on things." But let me rephrase this, folks. That wasn't a 12-year-old girl. That was an 18-year-old girl that does not live in our district, came over, someone dropped her off in front of my house, and she came up and talked to me. But if she'd have been a real 12-year-old girl, I'd have listened to her. But somebody stepped real low to try to do that. That's a shame, because they know how I believe in kids. I've always believed in kids. I've been volunteering for 18 years in this district. My wife has been volunteering for 16 years in this district. We believe in kids. We have children come to our house after school to be mentored by my wife. Let me tell you this. Also, we'll go back to the young lady that said I hung up on her and things like that. She sent me an email. I called her. I talked to her. I figured that was the end of it. Instead, she called me once, she called me twice, she called me three times at my house. My house is my place.
Out of order, ma'am.
No, you didn't, three times. So, anyway, that's the reason I got mad about that. The thing is, too, I got a real good solution to this whole thing, but you people won't vote for it. You'll say, "No." Here's the deal. Let's name Judson High School partially Judson High School. That's where he was. That's where he did all of his work. He didn't do his work over here at this other school. He did it over there, and he did a damn good job. So, if you guys want it, I'll back it. I will back doing that. Change it to Parsley Judson High School. No, you won't do that, because you want to do something else. And I know what it is. People's talking about racism. Baby, it's standing right there in front of you. Hold it now. I'm not done. I'm just getting warmed up here. The thing is, folks, Parsley loved his high school so much, right? He's the one that stood in front of this building next door here, and when he had a sign saying, "We don't need another high school." He shook it in my face at least once, maybe more. He didn't want another high school. He wanted to keep those kids over there in the gray campus and the red campus, jammed in like sardines. No, that is not a person that is a good person for our district. I'm sorry about that, but I tell the truth. You can ask anybody. I will say what I believe, and if you don't like it, I'm sorry. But that's what I believe. And you can mumble as much as you want. I don't care. I believe that's the way it was. Thank you.
Mr. Flores.
Thank you. I was a member of this board when we hired Dr. Mackey, and we gave him a direction, you know, raise our scores, because our scores were going down the tubes. We did not have any direction. Dr. Lyman was a nice guy, but he really wasn't ready for this bigger district. You know, he came from Ingleside, and I just don't think he was ready for this size of a district. Dr. Mackey came in from Beaumont, you know, it was a, we asked him to do certain things, align the curriculum, get the scores up, and help bring the district finances up. And he did all those things. He brought the 2006 bond in at budget. You know, there may have been propositions that were over, but in total, we did not go over the bond issue. Gentlemen got up here and spoke about the process. Was the process followed? Was the meeting posted 72 hours before as required by law? Yes, it was. Was the agenda item on the posting? Yes, it was. A board member, did a board member make a motion? Yes. Was it seconded? Yes. Was it discussed? Yes. Everybody had the opportunity. And was it voted on? Yes. And it passed five to two, voting in favor were Mr. Mancius, Mr. LaFoil, Mr. Salyer, Ms. Pashal, and myself. You know, there's a lot of things been said, and during one of the meetings when I had an opportunity to speak, I said that, at that time, there were more, you weren't coming up here, people weren't coming up here and saying, "Name it for so-and-so, name it for so-and-so." They were coming up here and saying, "We don't want it named for him." And it was soon after that that I started getting, "We want it named for Eddie Parsley. We want it named for Clarence Alberts, such." But, and then I got some emails, and I read everybody's emails. I get them, and I read them, you know? In fact, I know you all, when the state legislator pulled back $5 billion, I'd like to see all your emails that you sent them, because you were appalled at what they did to education, you know? But, you know, I understand the passion behind this. I understand the folks that get up here and, you know, one spokesperson came up and brought in my wife on this. So, I just called my wife, and I said, "Hey," you know, they were said, you know, they said, "You quit because, you quit early." She quit in Jan, she retired in January, because that's when she's allowed to get her year in. That's the law, you know? If you could retire in January and get credit for the full year, would you do that, or stay until, you know, the end of the school year? But she decided, my wife decided that. And, you know, this person, I guess that's why she was unfriended on Facebook, but anyway, she did not, you know, leave because of that, because, "Oh, I got to get out of here." She was, she, we've talked about it, believe it or not. I had to vote against a raise for teachers while she was a teacher here. You know, you talk about being tough. Now, that's something you have to go home and, you know, sleep longer on the couch after that. No, but she understood it. So, you know, it's, the process was followed, folks, and that's what you have to go by. That's what I'm going by. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to say a few words. Being the president, and being the president, I have taken a lot of hits, a lot of malicious slander, a lot of emails, and that's okay. I'm the president. But I think you all deserve an explanation, just like the letter, Dr. Salinas and I, she helped me write, we published in the Herald, too, and it was on, have my name on, explaining the process and what we did. Some people didn't like that letter. That's okay, but we told you what the process was. Now, the only power any board member has in this board is their vote in open session just like now. That's the only power. No one else has any power. And in our, our vote is our individual promise to the community. And it's also, the majority vote is the promise to everyone we vote on. Now, if you rescind this, if we rescind this vote tonight, where's our credibility? Just like they said, no, it's okay. The wind, the wind will blow, and somebody else will want something. But Dr. Salinas made a statement in October meeting, and she said, and I'm going to paraphrase, "It is the duty of each board member to respect the vote of the majority and move on." I have great integrity, and Dr. Salinas has integrity. Now, some people don't want to, want to do that. That's okay. Some people change their vote, but it takes courage and integrity to stick to your original vote. You know, this, this, this board here is supposed to be a team of eight. It's not. It's a team of seven. There's one board member that wants to grandstand, write letters to the editor, call his lackeys down at the Express News, and have editorials put, you know, in the, in Express News. That's fine, but people, people realize this. People know this. Now, as for what I did, and I put you through a lot of heat, and you notice, I didn't grandstand. I didn't write back a lot of nasty letters or anything, but I want to explain to you what happened. The board was, made a vote to name it the Mackey High School. Now, in our board procedures, which everybody likes to have, 2A5, and I'm going to read the last pair, last sentence. However, if the district has taken action reliance on the prior vote, the item will not be placed on the agenda. Reliance means if there was any action taken on it, it will not be put back on the agenda. That's a legal term. Everybody on this board has this. This was signed by the board members. It was reviewed by Walsh Anderson for legality and truth. Now, some people on this board want to pick and choose the part of this operational procedure they want to use. Folks, this document is, in its totality, is its strength. This document now is worthless. I put this back on the agenda, because people wanted it back on the agenda. Now, as for what it being called king, before I do anything, and somebody made some comments that I used legal fees and all that, well, you're wrong. As a board president, it's my job to find out and understand what the legality of any action is. I had Laura Fowler, who's one of the best brains of education law in this state. She wrote two chapters in textbooks, published in law school, and many peer-reviewed articles. And basically what she says, and I want to get it right, she says, "It is my professional opinion that the president or other member acting as chair governing board of a Texas Public School District has a hold discretion to decline an item in a category of non-essential act, as in this case, proposal renaming of a building." Mr. Mancius didn't like that, so he took it to Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, and Kyle, our other law firm, and they told him the exact same thing. It is discretion, that's the only power a board president has, is to set the agenda. Now, why did I put it back on the agenda? Folks, do the math. It was five to two. What do you think it's going to be tonight? It's going to be four to three. Now, a couple of things I want to say on those emails I got. I got, and the board members, too, got some vicious, and evil, and disgusting emails. I didn't answer them. I want to tell you right now, those words you sent those emails to me, they did not hurt me at all. But you want to upset me and did hurt me? That these words came from so-called Judson community members. If the people who sent me those emails are representative of the Judson community, this community really is in trouble. It really is in trouble. I have never in my life said anything to anyone's face or an email. Some of you people said to me, "You should be ashamed of the language you used in the emails that all of us got." I didn't say anything. I'm the board president. I got big shoulders, and I take it. But let me tell you something else. I think, well, because I didn't raise up, I think you're all, you think it's all sitting on my hands. Well, I wasn't. I was trying to resolve this behind the scenes, and I want you to listen to what I'm going to say right now. There were opportunities to address this issue in a dignified and respectful manner. There were opportunities to address this issue in a dignified and respectful manner. But guess what? One of our board members and his cronies kept stirring it up. Every time I tried to make a move to try to fix this, what happened? There was another letter in the editor, there was another editorial, there was more words spoken on what? Facebook. Change.org. You talk about boiling. You talk about boiling, those people wrote those emails, they're the bullies. I respectfully answered and talked to everybody that's taught me and talked to me. Did I answer all the emails? No, because I don't answer emails that are derogatory and malicious, okay? Well, I'm just telling you that. Now, let me tell you. And I'll tell you something else, you know, and I, a lot of people said here, this is the biggest outturn I've seen in the five and a half years I've been on this board. Okay? But here's my question. Where are your values? Let me tell you, okay? Last summer, when a young Jutson graduate, young man, who was a football player, got a full-ride scholarship with incarnate work, was bored one summer and taught himself Mandarin Chinese, was gunned down in Harry's Wordbox in 35. Where was your people's outrage then? Nowhere. Two weeks later to the day, two weeks later to the day, a young man, a former Jutson student, was gunned down in the parking lot of ELOF Elementary. ELOF Elementary, by a Jutson student. Where was your outrage? Tell me. People are dying. Where's your outrage? This is, this is more important than the students, is what you're saying. Now, let me say something else. This spring, ma'am, you're out of order. Okay, let's put it, this spring, okay? What happened at Jutson, at Wagner High School? Our principal suspended a student for wearing gang collars. What did he do? What happened? He went and got his buddy, come out and shot up the principal's car. Where was your outrage on that? Nowhere. Huh? Where was your outrage? Okay? No, you weren't. Okay? Well, I'm not, we don't talk back and forth here, okay? But also, where was your, where was your thank you for the faculty of Wagner High School and a principal that protect the kids in this district? Mr. England out there, okay? Tom. I've known Tom for 35 years. Tom got him, said he'd take a bullet, and I think he would. But you know what? You people need your priorities right here. I'm telling you. You have, you just, you, the energy that you people used on this, just think if you used half of it positively in this district, what we could do. You know? Now, y'all shaking your heads, but, you know, it's my turn to speak. So, with that, you know, my grandmother used to say, "You get more with sugar than you do salt." A lot of you have poured salt on this wound, over and over again. You didn't allow this board to try to fix this. What you did, you spun it up. Your ringleader down there kept spinning it up, and spinning it up, and that's why we're here today. So, that's all I got to say. Mr. Manceas, go right ahead.
Mr. Salyer, did you get Fowler to waive the confidentiality regarding what you just quoted?
No, it's sent to every board member.
Yes, but it's attorney-client confidentiality. It is, it's not for general consumption. I just want to know, did you get their permission?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah.
So I can actually share then content of that letter?
Yes.
Because you just read what you wanted to read on it, and there was a lot more on there, too.
Yeah, you can read it.
So, if you don't mind, I, I don't have it with me.
You have the floor, Mr. Manceas.
Do you have your copy?
Yes, I have my.
May I have your copy?
No. You should brought your own copy.
Talk, talk about a, that's fine. That's fine. I really don't need it, but my concern, obviously, is that we didn't violate that, that attorney-client privilege, and that's why I was very careful not to quote anything that was given to us by council. And I'm not sure that Fowler waived it. She may, because she's your friend, you're paying her to give you decisions you want. So, maybe that's how it works, but basically, in the opinion, there was also references to, that this would be contentious if Mr. Salyer took this type of action. Obviously, it has been contentious. And I want to be very clear, the only reason that I used the media and wrote a letter and all of that is because you attempted to silence me. And as a board member, I have every right to speak. By not putting my item on the agenda, you killed the opportunity for me to talk. And so, that, that...
And you had more reliance, Mr. Manceas.
That is the definition of a bully. I'm, I'm putting it out there. So you talk about me, the vision, the vision right there. So, the bottom line, I had to take that recourse to inform the community what was happening. I did not want them to think we didn't care about what they thought. And so, I certainly do care about what my community thinks. Again, no regrets, I would do it in two seconds if given the same opportunity. But hopefully, you would exercise better judgment and just put the item on the agenda next time I ask for it. So, the bottom line, in terms of the legal, and thank you, Mr. Salinas, I'm gonna jump in that same gray water, because I'm not sure that this was waived, but in the Fowler letter, that I know we, we paid for this, so we paid for opinion for you to keep something off the agenda. And so, let's see, and the thing is, she never referenced local policy. It was everything else in general, because I think attorneys like to get paid, so they want to make things a little bit gray. But there was something that stated, and obviously, I can't find what page it was in, because I read every page, but the essence of it was, "Be careful. If you do this, you will cause some issues." I mean, the community's going to be in an uproar, and they have been. So, one other thing I want to say, too, is that, Mr. Salyer, there was a great program that Metzger Middle School was utilizing, and the board majority killed this program. And I referenced that, because you were part of that board majority. We talk about issues, social issues with our kids. Programs that help our middle school kids understand their differences are important. It alleviates violence later when they're trying to be in illegal activities. And so, talk about kids, this was your opportunity to do that, too, so I was about to remind you on that. And secondly, the whole issue about openly telling the community, I'm gonna stick by my guns, I will tell you, you had had a personal issue with internal audits and supporting Mackey. And so, you made it sort of your own personal endeavor to shoot that down in which way you possibly could. So, in essence, you were playing politics, and you were changing people's thoughts and minds, and it's okay. It's part of the job, it's part of what we do, but don't say that I'm the divider, because essentially, you've done the same things. I'm just trying to speak truth and, and represent my community, which is what we all should be doing.
Mr. LaFoye.
Gee, Mr. Maceas, I don't see the halo above your head. Did you lose it? The thing is, Mr. Maceas, everything he said, you did, and more. As far as the audit, I checked myself with districts that had audits. They said all the, the only thing with an audit was a money bet. Money went in, nothing came back. You didn't look into that, did you? The thing is, Mr. Maceas, I don't believe that you are a very true person. As far as the people out there going for Mr. Parsley, what we need to do is, I will vote for naming the high school, the Jutson High School, renaming it Parsley-Jutson High School. But you don't want that. Okay, thank you very much. I call for the question.
Let's vote, call for the question. We will, let me go here.
Mr. Chairman, can you please do, never mind, electronically?
Yeah, we're gonna do electronically, okay? So, let's do, we're calling for the question, okay? We're not blinking. Yes is for the call for the question, no is to continue debate. Gilbert, this isn't working. There we go, there we go. All the votes are in, let's tally. Motion pass, it's call for the question. We are, let me clear this. Now, we're gonna vote, let me get this going. We want to read it again. 3A. Consider and take possible action regarding the rescinding of the naming of the Dr. Willis R. Mackey High School. A vote yes is to rescind, a vote no is to keep it the same name. Motion fails, the high school stays named Willis-Mackey High School. 3, okay, 3A fails, so I'm gonna pull B. B is, can be considered, because that one didn't work. Now, next one, 3C. Consider and take possible action regarding reorganization of Jutson ISD Board Leadership, President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary. I'm turning the gavel over to Mr., I mean, Dr. Montoya, to select nominations for president.
Again, members of the board and community, we begin the process to select the board president, and at that point, I return back to the board president to continue the others.
Dr. Montoya?
No, it doesn't need to be a motion.
Dr. Montoya, I'd like to nominate Dr. Melinda Salinas as president.
Okay, Melinda Salinas is, is one name. Is there any other names from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to leave all the members the way they are now, which will be Salinas, Salinas, excuse me, Gilbert Forbes, Vice President, Renee Pachel, Secretary, and Mr. Siler, President.
Okay, let me ask again, for the record, are there any other individual nominations for the board president?
Mr. Siler.
Okay, so we really have three items on the board for voting. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and do that. Yeah. Let's go with the first one. The first name is for board president, Dr. Melinda Salinas. All those in favor on this board, please vote yes. If, if not, no.
Electronically.
Where do you like to, we gotta get, there we go.
Yeah, electronically. Again, Dr. Melinda Salinas for board president. Okay, we have a four to three for the no. So now, we move for the next item. All positions left as is. All positions, president, vice president, secretary, and assistant secretary, as is. Please vote yes or no. Okay, again, we have a four to three to remain, everything as is. So, at this point, the, yet the last one is no, and void. So, Mr. Salyer?
I just want to say one thing left. I appreciate all of you, what you said and did. The, the board has voted. Respect that vote, and let's move on. This, this meeting is adjourned at 9:36.